Welcome everyone, I forgot to say that. Welcome back. We have a few items on our consent agenda tonight, is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Movement second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Supposed? Okay, passes. Stud reps, we have two new ones this year, Macy Moholland and Acacia Westgate. Please come up to the table here, have a seat, introduce yourselves so we know who's who, and you guys have the floor. Good to have you here this evening.
Good to be here. Well, all go first, my name is Macy Moholland, and I'm a senior this year at Silverton High School, and I'm excited to be working with all of you this year. So, I'm gonna start off about, talking about ASB, it's run by Johnny Farrell, and right now we're working on our homecoming events. Homecoming week is scheduled for Friday, the 27th through October 5th, and we'll be kicking off homecoming with the bonfire on Monday, the 30th, at 7:00 PM, right behind the soccer fields out at the new campus. And we want to thank Mr. Roth for donating the location again, and remind all of you that you're all welcome to attend. Throughout the week, our high school will be decorated in our themed hallways, and we will be putting on fun-filled assemblies, and getting our student body excited as our foxes prepare for the big game. Next, we have our annual homecoming parade at 4 o'clock on Friday, October 4th, in downtown Silverton, and many of our elementary schools and high school clubs build clubs and participate in this parade, and because of that, it has grown more successful each year. The Future Fox Fair, which will be held at the Schleter Street Gym, will be from 5:00 to 6:00 PM on Friday, October 4th, and this event is great for families with younger elementary kids, and so we really invite anyone who wants to come down and have some fun, do some high school spirit activities, and then Friday evening, we will have our mighty foxes play Lebanon at 7:00 PM, then during halftime, court presentations will be made. Lastly, on Saturday, at 8:00 PM, we will hold our homecoming dance at the school. So, I want to thank the community for being a part of our homecoming, and we're really excited for the upcoming events. Next, we have Key Club, run by Megan Miller, and Key Club is helping co-owners with the Oktoberfest group, and promoting new membership until November, and then after the homecoming parade, we'll also help with cleanup. National Honor Society, or NHS, is run by Chris Garnal, and they are accepting new applications from juniors and seniors who qualify for membership. All applications are due the 25th of September, and officers are currently planning for the upcoming soccer food drive for next month. Theater, run by Doug Osterhout, has upcoming auditions for Arms in the Man, student-directed by Carissa Mathé, and Steel Magnolias, which will be student-directed by Savannah. Arms in the Man will be performed on November 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, if you want to go ahead and mark your calendars early, and Steel Magnolias will be performed on December 12th, 13th, and 14th. Next, Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA, run by a new advisor this year, her name is Trish Conlin, and FBLA is volunteering for a fundraiser at Oktoberfest, and they're working on competition events for the fall. Members and officers will also help run the Future Fox Fair for homecoming along with the ASB students in charge. Interapp Club, run by John Mannion, is accepting new members and are working on paying their dues. Future Farmers of America, or FFA, run by Scott Towery and Sarah MacArthur, they had a very busy summer with the county and state fair, and they represented our high school well by placing first in landscape, ag mechanics, beef herdmanship, and second industry. For specific student awards, Jared Brown received ninth in tractor driving, Sarah Potter won first advanced in floral arrangement along with Brianna Hatner, who placed first novice in floral arrangements. And for the beginning of the school year, FFA will be starting their meeting soon. Speech team, run by Katie Cantrowitz, is beginning classes and introducing all the new kids coming into the high school to speech, and on the 28th of September, there will be a fall workshop for all the new speech students to attend, and on October 12th, Silverton High School will be hosting the Silverton Novice Tournament. And lastly, construction will be starting their meetings on Wednesday, and auto club will be starting their meetings on Thursday and have their annual car show. I know those are all information, any questions or points of clarification on any of those?
Stop.
Anyway, thank you.
Hi, I'm Acacia Westgate, I'll be covering the sports this year, I'm a junior. And so, for football right now, we just had varsity off to a great start, they won two games against Springfield and Ben. Springfield game was 34-7, and the Ben game was 42-0. There's a home game this Friday against Dallas. Silverton varsity football is ranked sixth in state, is second in 5A. Junior varsity also played Springfield and Ben, but they lost both games, and freshman has lost one game against Ben so far. Volleyball, varsity volleyball has played two games, they played South Salem and lost 0-3, they also played West Salem and lost 0-3, then junior varsity played West Salem and lost, and freshman played South Salem and lost, so volleyball's not doing very good right now. For soccer, boys varsity played a game against North Eugene and won 4-1, and girls varsity soccer has played West Salem and North Eugene, they lost to West Salem 1-3, they won the North Eugene game 3-0. Cross-country, we have Colton Harley and Travis Sin as our top two in the 100 meters for boys, and for girls, we have Aaron Sin and Lily Paritas for our top two in the 100 meters.
Great, any questions? Good report, girls, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good first meeting.
You're not staying? I didn't mean to. It's very common, homework and things. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open it up to our first audience with visitors, would anybody like to address the board tonight? We'll have another one at the end of the meeting, Gene.
Thank you for letting the meeting be open. On or about August the 20th, Phil Appleton, the chairman of the Yes Unbond Committee, and myself, more or less the chairman on the No Unbond Committee, wanted to inspect Eugene Field School, and he just wanted to go into the crawl space in Indiana, and the purpose was to see if the details existed that would support the theory that I have about how the building can be saved. We received an email back from Andy on the 19th, in which he said that that access was denied. Quote, "Any person or business authorized to complete this review will be selected based upon their expertise, qualification, licensure, and other credentials to do so. Policy describes these elements, and local taxpayers expect their use as they should." I asked Andy then, by email, to produce those documents and records so I could look at them, and I haven't followed through, but he indicated that I can pay a certain amount of money, but in the case of this access, he's emailed back, "My decision in this case remains the same, access to these restricted areas is to occur only by those with district authorization, such as maintenance personnel and approved insured contractors." So I'm asking the board if this is something that you want, I would certainly think that with the activities by myself and Mr. Appleton, that we'd be qualified to do a little bit of looking, I don't think it was going to be something that was going to be particularly hazardous or hazardous to the building. So what is your feeling in that regard? I know that you yourself did receive the copy of the email.
Yes, I did, and I guess I can't speak for the whole board, but my personal opinion is I back up Mr. Blando on this one. We can't just let any, anybody into crawl spaces and attics and stuff in buildings. We just, you know, there's a liability issue there, we can't just let any member of the public in, and we have a process, when we do, when we do work like this on buildings, to inspect a building and to figure out different options, we have a process we go through to pick and hire licensed qualified professionals, and qualified contractors, qualified consultants, and I don't think you qualify for that, Gene, because, you know, number one, you don't have a license, the last I heard, and I just, you know, just, I just don't think you're qualified for that, and we can't just let any, anybody into those spaces because of district liability. And Andy, you can, you know, fill me, fill in with anything you need to, or anybody else on the board?
Well, Andy, you've heard my response, I mean, and thank you, Gene, for sharing that, and, and I do stand by that, I, I think it's really important for, for the taxpayers of the district as well, to know that their school board follows their own public procurement policy, the board has a vested interest in determining the best use, the future use of Eugene Field School, and I think of all times, when it comes to decision-making, that now is the time for, for the board to rely upon the public procurement practices that you use, and, and I agree, we're talking about qualified professionals to make very significant short and long-term decisions, or at least influence short and long-term decisions about that building.
Well, I don't think we're talking about an instance of procurement, we're not procuring anything, we're issuing our opinion, and the opinion was going to give us some details to the same three professional design people that looked at the Schleter campus, and come up with some solutions, you know, right now, we're plowing into areas of what, what are we going to do, it's clear that we shouldn't be standing tonight in the proposal of bond, so we need to be doing something that's practical.
And that's what, that's what, that's what we as a board are gonna, are gonna be looking into, and investigating all the, all the different options.
By getting your opinion, we are procuring that.
Okay, but at the same time, and I'm gonna stay at this, you should be interested in why does Gene Pfeiffer feel that this building could be fixed for less than $2 million? Now, it could be go expanded from that, we need to put insulation in and other things, it didn't show up until the photos that you produced showed, but, you know, me not having a license to be a general contractor, I'm not asking to bid this thing, but my experience stands for itself, I've been doing this for 45 years, I'm very respected.
Because of district liability, we can't just let anybody into, into have access to these buildings.
I think, I think that's a weak, very weak discussion, very well, it could be, I could go with any of your maintenance people to look at something, doesn't take very much time to do that, I'm, I'm going to keep challenging you on this issue, you should want to know what's going on, and for certain sake, I've been involved with the district for about four decades now, I've been a public servant relative to public laws, just like yourselves, in many meetings, I've been chairman of many meetings, and I should be respected as someone who'd go and look and evaluate that there's something there that could be done, maybe we can modify it after I present what I believe will happen, but it still needs to be done, but right now, this school of school year, we're back at it, we're using Eugene Field School. This thing just keeps going on, it's gone for, for many years, as we, as we all know. We need to face it, and we're gonna fix it, but we're not gonna fix it, but we shouldn't just be abandoning it because we don't know how to do it.
Okay, I, Gene, and I do think, you know, this board has given you multiple opportunities to voice your opinions and, and watch you, you know, your views, and we can, we will continue to do that, and you're welcome to come, but as far as access to limited, you know, the limited areas of the building, that's gonna be up to qualified individuals who are licensed and bonded and aren't such, aren't liable.
Until you're rid of your concern, we are, are looking at individuals who live in the building, see what, what are options for that building, whether we can mediate it, or if we can't, and, and it's part of the care process.
And believe me, we know as well as anybody that something needs to be done with Eugene Field, and it's high on our priority list, in fact, our last work session, I, you know, I made the comment, I don't think we, we can't let this go for another year even, we need to decide in the next few months what we're gonna be doing with that building, so it's gonna be, it's high on our priority list, Gene.
But I may say, so it's high on your priority list, to get rid of this school, it may be, and I agree, different things from the, from the minutes of the board, there is an interest there to, to look into and saving the building, whether it's for a period of time or for a long period.
Yes, there is, and we're gonna be looking into all those options, but our last work session, that was discussed, and we're gonna be looking into all those options.
Okay, so my question was addressing the board, not just the chairman of the board, does the board feel that this is not something that should be looked into, do, why is Mr. Pfeiffer presented this thing, why is Mr. Pfeiffer persistent about it? When Mr. Pfeiffer has looked at this building many times over in the past, not just because my children went to school there, but because I am structurally capable of analyzing it, both the fire like and safety, and how structure works. I'm not an engineer, and I'm not an architect, but I know these things, so I'm interested, if you not want to discuss it tonight, that's fine, but it needs to be discussed, it needs to be rendered back in the joint committee, not just yours, which I feel is biased.
I totally, wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Blando and Tim, I think we should have licensed professionals in there, and not everybody is welcome to come in and crawl through crawl space, so I, I totally agree with him as well.
Mr. Chairman, Tim, with all due respect, if I can try to hear, I'm sorry, Tom.
No, I agree.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I agree too, and I have, I have an interest in trying to save the building, but we need to have qualified professionals look at it, and you definitely have, have some expertise in it, but along with qualified professional, they need to be unbiased, to not have a political dog in fight, we need to hire, we need to make sure somebody that gives us an opinion that both sides can trust, can, can trust the other, and, and that's, you know, there's been, there's been contentious, it was a contentious bond issue, and I, I'd like to, I'd like to take a good look at, at saving it, but we need to have someone in there who doesn't have a, a dog in fight, I guess, so to, so to speak, so we have, we are looking at it, we're looking at it pretty hard, Gene.
Tom, all the citizens have a dog in this fight.
But they can't all go crawl around crawl spaces.
That's true.
We can't, we can't do that, and you do, and you do have a lot of experience with the board, you have a lot of construction and structural experience, but, you know, then with you, then the next guy, then the next guy, it's, it's our policies, and that's, that's, I, I got, I'm, I'm with Tim on this.
I have to say that I agree with Tom, what he just had to say, I mean, Gene, you've done some, some really helpful work for nothing for the board, and, and we appreciate that, and I think it has, it has made a difference, but I think that there's a great difference between doing a walkthrough evaluation, and actually getting into the building and crawling through the attic, and through the crawl spaces, and so on, that's kind of a, a whole, a whole different realm, and I agree with what Tom said about an unbiased opinion, I think that one of the things that we emphasized in our last discussion, at our last meeting about this, and the future of Eugene Field, is that we really need some objective data, and we really, we really focused on that, because we do have people, we have vast difference of opinion on this board right now, about the direction that we should go with Eugene Field, so I think that the, you know, the imperative here is, is really objective, unbiased data about the building.
And that was, that was a lot of feedback we got back after the bond, we collected some information from the public, and, and we heard a lot, they wanted data that they could trust, and, I want to cloud the issue, I think Tom summed it up well.
Yeah, well, I mean, and I wanna, I wanna follow a bit with that, many of the issues you brought up were well taken by this board member, and I appreciate it, some I, some I don't agree with, but, but many I do, and your, your, your involvement, in my opinion, is, is welcome, but, but at some point, we, we have to, we gotta put the, you know, put the brakes on, and I think, at this point, it's time to get some unbiased people in, and we need to make our decision here.
Last time I spoke to this buddy, it wasn't about doing something with the schools, it was about keeping them and maintaining them, and I was challenged in that discussion by Wally, saying, "We just need to get rid of the old Schleter campus, etc." We have an attitude here that needs to go away, you talked about me being biased, where is your bias coming from, Wally, I don't understand it. You're, you're, by everybody I've talked to, say that Wally is extremely fiscally responsible to a fault, and yet, in this case, we have an asset that you should be protecting, you're outright saying, "Get rid of it," without knowing what are the facts of other people who are not biased by big money when it comes into new, new buildings.
We all have a bias, and in my opinion, the, the district is better off financially without that, that building, because we don't need it, and it's a, it's a burden on our, our general budget, but we need data to, to prove ourselves and to the public that, for the direction we're heading.
We're gonna need to have opinions from people like myself to be able to, and obtain what are the facts, what is there, what can you do with it. I listened to the people from the international company saying, "We don't know how to fix the lateral support of this building, we thought about putting Stuckman on the front," I mean, it's ridiculous, there's methods for fixing it.
Any other questions for Gene? Okay, thank you, Gene.
Okay, one more thing, I know that the board is considering a group to review what to do with these different things, and on the table about having someone for bodies from both sides of the fence to be involved, and I know that I'm at a point here where I am in a wrestling contest with many of you, but I request that I be on that committee, so, thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
Would anyone else like to address the board tonight? Okay, we'll have a second one if anybody changes their mind. Okay, moving on to discussion items, 2013-14 draft district goals, Andy came up with three, three goals for us to look at, based on our last, some conversation on our last work, work session, they were in our packet, does anybody have any comments, questions, feelings? If I can find them right now.
Hi. Oh, I just had something on goal number three, but, well, where are you going?
I was just gonna say that I think this is, this is really a good first shot at the goals, I, I'm glad to see that there are not too many, and they're very clear, concise, major issues that need to be addressed, so I think they're just, just about right.
My only thought was on goal one, year-long strategic visioning, does it really need to be a year-long, can we move this on quicker?
I think that's, that's up to the progress that you make, Wally, the board makes, with, in concert with your consultants, and the consultants did comment that it could take less than a year, so I'd be fine if you, if you would.
I just could suggest try the long, year-long.
The year-long. You may, I suppose you'd be fine, maybe it could take longer, too.
Sure, absolutely.
We may, we meant just to comment on that, we may also, it may also be a year-long process, but we may make decisions along the way, that doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna wait a year to decide what to do with every facility issue, I think.
Suggestion might be to take out year-long and add, insert comprehensive instead.
Good, that'd be good.
Cover everything.
Let's write these in, because this is an action item for later tonight, so we could, if we decide to approve them tonight, we could do that with the changes. One thing I, on goal number three, one thing I read, when I read it, the identification of options for continued use of Eugene Field School, to me, that makes it, my bias might come through here, but to me, that makes it sound like we're going to stay in Eugene Field, and that may not be the way it reads to everybody, but I was wondering about putting something in there, like identification of options for, for continued slash discontinued use of Eugene Field. Or is that even a necessary?
You know, it doesn't matter to me, Tim, I see your point, the thought that I had when I read it was, is that it wouldn't hurt to have options, not that we would select ultimately to, to adopt those, any of those options, but at least we would have some option on the table if we wanted, you know, for consideration, I suppose, that's the way I, I read it.
Okay. But I want to hear, I want to hear options for both things, so it's not.
Yeah, it's just the way, just the way it sounded to me when I read it.
Would you read better identification of options regarding Eugene Field School?
I'd be fine with that, too. I, I agree with Owen, I see your point, Tim, but, you know, I think it works.
Okay.
As it is, but it, you know.
That's fine with me.
I think it's important everybody to be comfortable with it.
Yeah, I agree with Wally, I mean, we could change that real easy, to put regarding use instead of continued use. I mean, that's.
Good with me.
Whatever you guys want to do, that'd be fine.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, anything else on the goals? Like I said, this is an action item later, and we can.
So, Tim, I'm gonna read these with the changes that I think I heard from you, number one, would then be changed to implement a comprehensive strategic visioning and public input process which produces a document as a basis for comprehensive district-wide decision-making and planning, and number three is revised district facility plan with priority emphasis on the following, technology infrastructure and application upgrades, identification of options regarding use of Eugene Field School, and evaluation of real estate property no longer required for school purposes.
Goal one has two comprehensives.
Thanks, Kukka.
What was that?
Should we get rid of one of them?
Seems kind of redundant.
That's a basis for district-wide decision-making?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, cross out the set of comprehensive.
Right.
Yeah, and I agree with Dave, and I thought this was a really, really good set of goals.
Sometimes a board sets too many goals, and have a, you know, a laundry list of things, and.
And a couple of these are fairly big ones.
Sort of can't make progress, and significant progress on any of them.
Anything else on the goals? Okay, Steel Hammer Property, designation as no longer required for school purposes, this is something we've talked about for a while now, on whether we should put the property at Steel Hammer up for sale or not, something that kind of came up in the bond election, that some people would like to see us evaluate our properties and get some revenue out of some of them if we could, so there's a resolution in our packet to take care of that tonight, everybody wants to, again, an action item later. Discussion?
I think it's a very good idea, it's been an item of discussion for all the years that I've served here, the disposition of our properties that were very unlikely to use, and I think that we owe it to the, the taxpayers, the patrons of the district, in our stewardship role here, to make the wisest use of our assets, and disposal of unusable real estate just makes sense.
And that's one we've pretty much decided we'll never use for school, so.
That's good, we limit to what we put out on the market as well, to hold value up on individual piece of property.
Okay, good. Okay, Budget Committee applicants, we have, had the application for two, we have one on our Budget Committee, we have two, two applicants, Robin Welch and Jonathan Edmonds, they're both from the north part of our district, so Bucreak-Studs Mills area.
And they're both in the area of the board, both in Athens.
Yeah, they're both very qualified, so, this is an action item to pick one of these tonight, so, in my meeting with Andy, one thing we, we talked about is, we have these, for our visioning process, we have meetings coming up in the different, you know, different parts of the district, and we could ask, whoever we didn't select for the Budget Committee, we could ask them to be a part of that, for that area, the other person, so, any discussion on this tonight, or right now?
Reading over both of them, you know, there was not one that stood out as, oh, that has to be the person, I could be, I'm very comfortable with either one of them, but they don't have anyone that, somebody has something.
These are always tough decisions, tough to do in a, a book setting like this, so.
I think, you know, I think you mentioned that Jonathan's been active longer, as far as the task force we've had, and whatnot, but, but I agree, they're both fine candidates.
That's the only thing I thought of, too, Jonathan's just been around a little longer, but that doesn't necessarily have an.
Well, I'll, I'll speak to Jonathan, I don't know Robin at all, but I do that, I served on the committee with Jonathan, and I thought that he was real active and valuable participant in that, I thought that he served really well in that difficult situation, was the redistricting times.
Anything else on this? We'll, like I said, an action item later tonight, too, because we have to get this under this month, so. Okay, any other items for discussion, anybody have anything else here? Administrator staff reports. Andy. 2013 school district enrollment figures, draft superintendent goal.
These are always tough decisions, tough to do in a difficult setting like this, so...
I think, you know, anything to mention, Jonathan's been active longer as far as the task force we've had and whatnot, but I think they're both fine candidates.
That's the only thing I thought of, too. Jonathan's just been around longer, but that doesn't necessarily...
Well, I'll speak to Jonathan. I don't know Robin at all, but I do that I served on the committee with Jonathan, and I thought that he was real active and valuable participant in that. I thought that he served really well in that difficult situation with the redistricting times.
Anything else on this? We'll, like I said, an action item later tonight, too, because we have to get this under this month, so... Okay, any other items for discussion? Anybody have anything else here? Administrator staff reports. Andy?
2013 school district enrollment figures, draft superintendent goals. Each of you received a copy of the first week enrollment sheet. For years, this board has been reviewing enrollment at the end of the first week as a snapshot for getting a sense of where, any enrollment changes that you may have. And it is just that, it's a snapshot. Your October 1st enrollment figures are really the, where the rubber hits the road for a variety of reasons. But this does give you a general sense. Experience is that these numbers will be inflected between now and October 1st. In most cases, they actually drop slightly over the course of that month. But a couple of items to note on what you see to this point. First of all, in the memo that I sent to you, I stated that we actually had an overall drop in enrollment. That the numbers that I had did not include all the kindergartners in the district, and so that was, that has now been included. So you can see, actually, we've had about a 34 student increase over 2011, or excuse me, 2012 figures. You can see some schools have a sharper increase than others, a sharp increase at Buick Creek. There is an increase at Victor Point, again, a successive increase at Victor Point. If you take a look at those numbers, and we've talked about this a little bit, that Victor Point is really growing quite quickly, and those are, those are movers, those are not transfer students. And it's interesting to note, it's a large geographic area, and maybe that makes a little bit more sense of it, but it's just interesting to know that Victor Point is growing as much as it is. And so Linda and I have begun to discuss options up there for what the future of, to be able to maintain a reasonable enrollment in the building that essentially is at capacity right now. So clearly, additional conversation is necessary in that regard. Otherwise, you see an increase at Scotts Mills, see an increase at Community Roots School, which is by design. They've opened, asked for their charter and for the lease agreement with the district allows them to increase their numbers to that point. And Silverton High School is the largest increase at 61. Some of those are transfers that have been moved in as well. Decrease, I was a little surprised at the decrease at Eugene Field School. However, when you take into account that about nine or 10 of the Scotts Mills fully kindergarten students are from Eugene Field, that accounts for a portion. And then it's pretty common for Community Roots or Bethany Charter School, for that matter, to access students from town schools. And so that may make up for some of it, but clearly Eugene Field is also, even without those considerations, is less than, I think, than what I expected. Otherwise, your overall enrollment is up, and that's where we are right now. I can address any questions or any observations that you may have at this point, but I caution you on using this as decision-making information until we, I think, get a little bit further along in this school year.
You mentioned Victor Point, but Buick Creek has an increase of 39. What's going on there?
I believe he has had an increase in transfers, but he hasn't had 39 transfers. So I think it's movements. That's my best sense. And as I think about the past a little bit, and I do realize, and take Silver Crest as an example, we do get spikes every once in a while in little valleys, and they were at 159, and that actually, remember at Silver Crest was actually more like 165, I believe, by the end of last year. And so now we've seen it drop down to 141. Again, I think we have large eighth grade classes that go out, we have small kindergarten classes that comes in. It's a little difficult to predict, especially in some of our smaller kindergarten schools.
Other questions for Andy? Okay, go, Andy.
The second document that you have received this evening, and Tim and I had a conversation about these on Friday, we met, I've given you a draft copy of my professional goals for the year, and they, well, there are some similarities between my goals and your district goals, but there are also some distinctions. And I think it's important to know a couple of items, and of course, I'm open-minded any input that you may have as far as modifications or changes you'd like to see. But number one is similar to the district goal, and that's to partner with you in implementing the district-wide strategic visioning process. And a couple of the elements of that, or the activities and timeline to that are pretty easy to understand, like selection of the consultants and so forth. But I also think, in the middle of all this, it's important information for me to extend to you, just in my mind, the need for opportunities for public input specific to this process, for my role in securing that and helping set up that in an objective fashion for the consultants and for each of you, provide the supportive data and information that you need in order to do the visioning process. And then the fourth bullet, you'll actually see a variation of that in my second goal, but that's to use strategies which prioritize a unified district presence. And while that could be rephrased a little bit, I really believe that based upon our conversation last year, even my evaluation last year, the conversations I've had with the administrative team at this point, and our efforts at a more unified approach to the district, that there's a need. And I think that became very clear last year, and I think will need to become even clearer as we move through this visioning process that we work and move ahead as a unified vision. So that's reflected in the first goal. It's also reflected in the second goal, which is more specific to communication practices. You'll see that, again, use of communication practices which prioritize unified district The third goal is a reflection of requirements specific to licensed employees in education, teachers, administrators, others, that there is to be a goal specific to student achievement. And in this case, this school is specific to the targets as defined in the Student Achievement Compact, which makes sense to me, anyway, for a superintendent, because that's what I am held accountable to. And while we haven't, you haven't approved the next year's Achievement Compact, because we intentionally postponed that due to the state postponing the October 15th, you'll see it as your work session, but you'll see that there are challenging goals or targets to be met through that Achievement Compact, and I think it's a reasonable accountability tool for you to expect from me. So those are my three goals, and would be happy to take additional input, otherwise I can refine those with Tim as well, and ultimately, you know, I'll sign them.
Anything on this? Anything else you'd like to see? Okay, good, Andy, thank you. Scott, financial report.
Great. You'll find your financial report in your board packet. First page is your general operating fund broken out by facility. So the first part is budget amounts not subject to carryover retention, and the second part is budget amounts which are subject to the carryover retention. This is your first report that you've seen this year. It's for the two months ending August 31st. So you won't see a lot of expenditures out of these budgets simply because we have the first teacher payroll reported on here, and we're working very hard on that. Page two is your balance sheet, which is simply, it shows your assets, your net assets, plus your current liabilities. And you'll see that our balance as of August 31st is 10.445 million. And then breaks that out by each fund. So those are all the funds and how much cash we have in each of those funds. Then on the next page is your revenue and expenditure summary, both comparing to the amount budgeted, how much we've received year-to-date, how much is remaining, and that goes across all funds. And then your back page is your cash flow summary. And your cash flow summary is always nice to take a look at. Our district is pretty fortunate. We don't go into negative cash flow situations ever or at all. And certainly, at the beginning of the year, we wouldn't expect us to get into that type of situation. But essentially, what it shows is all the revenue that we have coming in. The summary for the month of March is 1.9 million, and then our expenditures heading outdoor, 978,000. So our ending balance is up 946,000 each for this month, added to the previous month, and that's a cumulative balance on the bottom. So we're gonna work on some of these, the layouts of these particular reports, and I throw a couple of other different, you know, ideas of showing the data in a little different ways. If you have any thoughts on that, if you'd like to see something a particular way, if you have any questions about the financial report, please don't hesitate to ask. We wanna make this as clear as possible for you.
Okay, questions for Scott? Great, thank you very much. Heidi Ostrom, Pradam and Silver Crest Schools. Heidi's filling in for Mark Wright, who's out on medical stuff up there.
I love this claimer, I'm a little rusty. So please bear with me an aspirin for you, women.
You'll be fine.
Smooth, polished.
Yes. Well, first and foremost, I just want to express how pleased I am and how fortunate I feel to be back. For those of you who don't know me, I was an administrator in this school district for 25 years, maybe somewhere around there, and retired for six years. So I am back into fine schools. The staff is exceptional. They're strong, and they're hurting in some ways. It's been a difficult beginning of the year and challenge to their hearts and their minds to think about their leader not being ready to return to school at all. Many of them know me, so that, honey, needs a little bit. So I wanted to share with you the data, and it's interesting, the numbers don't match as superintendent, so I'm not sure with that. No, honestly, the fact is, we have children coming and going every day, and both of the schools that I have pleasure of working at bring in a lot of transfer students. So from day to day, our numbers look a little bit different. But you can see on the Pradam data that, according to our figures, we had 73 total as of the second day of school, third day of school, pardon me, 81 counting the kindergartners. And below that number, you can see the three rooms, lovingly called the little room, which is first and second grade, the middle room, third, fourth, and fifth grade, and then the big room, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. For dear comparison, I added last year's figures at the bottom. So we're relatively close, but definitely down just a wee bit. Transfer students, this is a pretty significant number, I believe, for a school the size of Pradam. 50 total transfer students coming into Pradam. Two kindergartners, which of course go to Central Howell, and 21 first through eighth graders coming from within Silver Falls School District, and 29 first through eighth graders coming from outside the district, all from Salem Kaiser. Of course, it's in an area of the district that's close to Salem Kaiser area, and so a lot of families historically have come our way. Wanna share the state test results from last year, with 100% of our students participating in both reading and math assessments. You'll see that in academic achievement, our reading level was level five, which is exceptionally good, with 90.7% of our students meeting or exceeding the standards in reading. And in math, again, level five, with 88.9% of our students meeting were exceeding the achievement standards. In academic growth, again, it was a strong performance. In reading, they attained a level three with a median growth percentile of 48, which basically says the school, the students in Pradam School are right on track with their growth in order to maintain or move up to the next standard expected of them. And in math, again, level five with a median growth percentage, percentile, pardon me, of 66, and they are also on track to meet or move up to the next standard in math. So it's overall a very strong performance by Pradam students. Silver Crest, then, we counted them at 148 students on the 5th of September, and you can see the breakouts. Interesting grade configurations this year, a little bit different from last year, and not as well-balanced number-wise, but staff made these decisions along with me. I feel really good about the groupings that we have. In first, second, and third grades, although it's hard to see it from this page, those children sort and resort throughout the day depending on what subjects they're learning. That's also true of the sixth, seventh, and eighth. So those students really share pre-grades to two teachers, Lucy Gilde and Sean Poole. Numbers are slightly down from last year, as you can see, and Silver Crest also brings in quite a number of transfer students, 49 total. The state test results from last year for Silver Crest with 100% of the students completing reading and math assessments also show all of the students, sorry, the school as a whole meeting or exceed right on track for growth in order that they again meet or reach the next standard score. That's it, folks. Can I answer any questions?
The 49 transfer students at Silver Crest, are those primarily from within the district?
Yes.
And rather than from outside?
Not as many from Salem. I do think we have a few, and I'm sorry, David, I didn't really go into the detail because, yeah, like most of my...
Just kinda curious about that.
We do have three bus stops going up to and coming back down to Silver Crest, which facilitates that.
Historically, we've had quite a number of in-district transfers from kind of the town area to Silver Crest, so I just kinda guess that they weren't all from Salem Kaiser.
Bit of a drive from Salem, but relatively reasonable for them, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Other questions for Heidi?
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Heidi.
Before I stand up, I'd like to extend an invitation to open houses at Pradam, which is tomorrow night, 6:30, ice cream social and visits to the classrooms, and at Silver Crest on the 19th at 6:00 p.m. for dinner and then visits to the classroom.
Thank you very much, Heidi.
I'll see you then.
Linda, Victor Point and district curriculum.
You got me on Goldenrod. You got me on Goldenrod. What you have in front of you is just basically Victor Point by the numbers. I was aware of the fact that Andy was gonna allude to the increase in enrollment up at Victor Point, so I wanted to give you just a hint of specificity as to what that looked like. So just following the math with me, we ended on the last day of school in June with 207 students, and we graduated 14 eighth graders and enrolled 14 kindergartners. So we were at about a wash when we walked away in June, and over the summer, we heard, got wind of 19 students that would be leaving Victor Point. 14 of those moved away, and five others chose alternative educational environments for whatever reason. Those families made those decisions. And then they started coming back. So we've had 26 kids as new enrollments over the course of the summer, and a majority of those in July while I was in the office, and then another chunk again in August when Mrs. Yaromai Secretary returns. So yes, there's property up in Victor Point. Yes, it is buildable, and people are building on it. The rentals are turning over a bit. You'll notice we do have some special care incidents where we have grandparents and/or great-grandparents now caring for children and/or financial situations, which are forcing families to move in together, co-helping situations for financial reasons. So that's where they came from, and so there are 214 of them, and we've been at either 214 or 215. Actually, we were at 215 for about an hour, and then they decided they weren't gonna stay. So we really are at 214, and I would anticipate that to be very, very stable. Our new families are stable families, even those on the rental properties. Our new families are stable families, even those on the rental properties. My gut would be that those are long time families in those rentals. So I don't know what that looks like over the long term, but at some point, we're going to have to talk about it. We are full. We are not accepting transfers. We can't accept transfers. At this point, even with a small kindergarten class of 14, I'm not taking anyone else. There's no room. So we, you know, we feel those growing pains when we look at people walking in the door and our speech therapist is saying, where am I going to hold therapy with my kids? I don't know. Where is our behavior specialist going to do some counseling sessions? I don't know. You know, at this point, probably, we have some pretty decent options in that, you know, my office can be made available and that, you know, is secure and quiet and private. And for scheduled things like that, I know I can just schedule myself to be somewhere else. And so that's kind of the plan we're going to work on for now, and we'll just make it work. I've got an incredibly flexible staff who has continued to say, you know, whatever we need to do, if my class is out at PE, someone can leave my classroom, you know, so we'll figure it out. But yeah, we haven't quite managed 215 kids in this setting before, so we're kind of learning as we go. Amidst all those kiddos, we have two new teachers. We hired Seth Gingrich to teach our fourth grade class, and Seth comes to us from Canby with a few years of experience, and he was a stellar addition to the Victor Point team. He's replacing a teacher who took an administrative position in the Salem Kaiser School District. And then our sixth grade position is our brand-new position. That's the brand-new classroom, that mayor house, and what was formerly our LRC. And so the LRC has moved into what was formerly my office, so I have moved into what used to be main office. Anyways, it's all good. You'll see just kind of the class size listings there. Obviously, we've got bubbles at first grade, third grade, and sixth grade. I've got spectacular teaching staff in all three of those rooms, and we've added additional classified staff. Just as I'm building schedules, I'm very aware of where those bubbles are. And other teachers have been very flexible and very willing to say, you know, I certainly will take less time to make sure that those heavy classrooms have the additional kind of aid and assistance that they need to get through the day. So that seems to be working just fine. I did introduce my sixth grade teacher by name, Mike Timmons, came to us from Salem Kaiser. Actually taught with Mike for 10 years. So it's been fun having him back and kind of crossing with him again in the building. So fantastic addition. Comes with almost 20 years of teaching experience, so great, great staff member. Just dates on there for you, Thursday, September 26th, so at the end of the month is our open house and pie and cake auction. Feel free to join us for a slice of pie and wander through classrooms. We start that at 6:30. And we are continuing our monthly assemblies. That's the last Wednesday of every month. Those are when we do our student achievement awards. We do recognize birthdays, and then most importantly, we recognize kids for character traits. So honoring students for being safe, respectful, and responsible, and then whatever the monthly character trait will be. And those kids get a personal note from me, and that really has become one of the highlights of what we do at Victor Point. And I continue to hear from families, that note's still on our refrigerator! And, you know, so just again, that personal contact of, yes, we are here to do great things in reading, writing, and math, but we care about who you are as a person as you're growing up to be a responsible adult and a contributing citizen in society. So those are fun. That's the last Wednesday of every month. So yeah, great stuff going on at Victor Point. It actually was an incredibly smooth start, so that was great. Really felt like we were doing the right work and moving in the right direction, so that felt good. On the curriculum bandwagon, I just wanted to give you just some additional pieces of information. I think you kind of had the overview of most of this, but we are diving right into the Talents Ed. That is the electronic observation system that we will be using for teacher evaluation. Essentially, we've got paper lists, so all of the teacher, they used to write their professional goals and would submit those on paper, and the principal would sign those and we'd submit them back to the teacher. And frequently, we were looking for paper, middle of the year, wondering which one of us had lost the goal form. So the Talents Ed system will move us completely paperless. We've built some really, really fine observation forms, and so the intent of the new evaluation system is that we will be in classrooms on a much more frequent basis. Six drop-in unannounced observations, and the administrative team is focusing in specifically looking on the use of varied strategies in teaching. So what kinds of instructional strategies are teachers using in the classroom? We are really zeroing in on that. We introduced that to staff at the Augs-In service, and we will revisit that through some of our early releases as well, but specifically looking for what kinds of teaching strategies are instructors using in front of kids and how effective are those? So the teacher effectiveness portion of the new evaluation system is twofold, in that we'll be looking at those teaching strategies, but each individual teacher will also be writing student growth goals. And part of their evaluation will be dependent upon the progress that their students are making. They choose which measures. They choose what their goal is. So they have a lot of control and a lot of say, really trying to empower staff in what are you doing in the classroom to ensure progress is made for your students academically? So, and that's all brand-new to them. So we're going to spend a lot of time talking about that and training on that and sort of fighting our way through that together. The STAR assessment is something else. It's brand-new. It's not up and ready yet. We've had some technical difficulties, but it's coming. So this is a Renaissance product. If you're familiar with Accelerated Reader or Accelerated Math, it's the same company. So we are beginning with only STAR reading. There is a STAR math assessment as well, and we did not purchase that product. We're going to tackle one at a time. So the STAR reading assessment is an online test, very short test. It is completely leveled, so it is independent of grades. So if you put a sixth grader on and they are capable of reading college-level texts, the test will adjust to that. So it becomes a completely leveled system. And the information that we can get out of STAR reading is some really, really fine reports that I think will be helpful for our teachers as far as scheduling leveled groupings. It will give us some specific lesson plans that could be used for the volunteer or an instructional assistant. And it also will dial all the way down to the specificity of being able to report specifically to which standard in CTSS our kids are mastering and where are their weaknesses in CTSS by strand, by standard. So that will give us some very powerful information to share with parents and to inform our instruction. So I'm excited about seeing where that ends up. We don't have it in teachers' hands yet. I'm hoping, you know, I'd like to feel it from the next week, but I'm not sure that that's...
That's actually going to be my next question. Do teachers know what to do with this information? It's great data, but do they know what to do with it?
Well, that leads me to the next thing on here. So early release PLCs and professional development. We are throwing a lot of new at teachers. Writing student growth goals is new. Embedding a brand-new assessment system is new. Houseville 2020 has mandated that we begin discussions about proficiency grading. That's new. So I've never sat here in front of you and done this before, but we are changing the model of early releases for this one year only. We're taking our traditional PLC model and putting it on hiatus for a year. And the reason we're doing that is because I desperately needed to buy back some time for professional development. Specific time where we can get teachers trained specifically in how to implement programs, what is the power in getting reports out of the programs that we're using. So we pulled five out of the 12 early release Mondays, and we've set those aside for professional development, specifically in the areas listed there. So our first September, so actually this, a week from today, is our first early release, and that entire session will be based upon writing SMART goals. SMART just stands for specific, measurable, attainable, results-oriented, and time-bound. It's simply a framework, a schema, for which the state is requiring teachers to write their goals embedded in our new teacher evaluation system. They need to be trained on how to do that. So we'll spend our first early release in September doing that. Our first early release in October will be centered around using the STAR assessment. The using of it is intuitive. Students sign on, what's their username and password. It's very intuitive, very user-friendly once you're in it. But the reporting feature is something I really want to make sure that teachers have a handle on so that they're... Through teachers' editions and resource materials so that they're ready to go the first way to school. So the early release calendar looks different. We had lots of discussions about it at cabinet level, Andy and Eric and Linda Brown and Scott and myself, and really felt like at this point, we didn't have many other options. We weren't in a position where we could continue to throw new, new, new at teachers without providing them some time, enough some time to work through that, so.
Makes sense. What's the anxiety level amongst the teachers with all the new stuff coming down? And at principal's too?
Yeah, we've metered, well, the principal's anxiety is very high because they have all the information. We really have tried to meter out. I've kind of been working in a, you don't need to know until you need to know, and so you don't need to worry about it then. And I think that's been somewhat effective. They have an idea that, you know, all of these things are coming, but nothing's been dumped in their lap, and our intent is to not ask them to do anything without providing them the tools and the training to be able to do it. So, you know, they haven't spent much time talking about STAR because we haven't taught them how to do that yet. So that was the strategy. I don't know that it's working particularly, but I think it's better than it could have been.
It sounds like a good plan.
Any questions?
Other questions for Linda? Okay, thank you very much, Linda. Good report, thanks. Okay, any board reports tonight? Correspondence? I don't think there was any correspondence. Okay. I'd like to open it up for a second audience of visitors. Would anyone else like to address the board tonight? Okay, moving on to action items. 2013-14, school year district goals. Is there a motion for approval as amended?
I'll move for approval as amended.
Move as second?
Moved as seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, goes pass. Second action item, resolution designated steel-hemmed property is no longer required for school purposes. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Moved as seconded, is all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, good. Third action item, selection of new budget committee member to a three-year term. Is there a motion to approve one or the other?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we appoint Robin Welch from Scottsdale's.
I'll second.
Who was the second?
They're both highly qualified individuals. From my perspective, it might be nice to have a fresh perspective. Possibly put Jonathan to work.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Jonathan would also be good on the vision part of it.
He's very bright, very articulate.
Other discussion? You moved as seconded to appoint Robin Welch to the Budget Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Robin Welch is on the Budget Committee. Okay, that, we're going to move out of regular session, adjourn to executive session under ORS 332061.